Recording in progress. The City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, alternate date, hybrid meeting called to order at one oh two P M. As a reminder throughout the meeting, please announce your name before commenting. This is for accessibility and identifies who is talking for people not using a screen. We will begin with a roll call of COBAC members and encourage each member to provide a self description. Our Chair Carl Burnett is excused, has an absence today, so I will be chairing the meeting. My name is John Halen, he/him, I am Vice Chair of COBAC, I am on site in the center of your screen, wearing a black T shirt.
Hi, I'm Aaron Rivers, I'm attending virtually. I have brown hair, I'm wearing a green blazer, a green hoodie, and I use he/him pronouns.
Okay, Amanda Hamer is not here, Derek Hoffbauer is not here, Corey Sparks is not here, next Liz Dieter Martin.
Hey, I'm Liz Dieter Martin, attending virtually, she/her, I'm wearing a blue shirt and I don't know, medium colored hair. And yeah, that's it.
Liz Woodfin here in Chambers. I am a white woman, blonde hair, blue eyes, and wearing a black blouse with a a cute little brooch.
Nicholas Raiden is not here, next Stephanie.
Actually, I'm here.
Oh, sweet, go ahead.
Yeah, so they have Nicholas Raiden, I'm a member of COBAC, I'm an architect in the community and I'm attending virtually, no camera on today because I'm doing multiple errands, but I go by he/him, his pronouns and yeah, thank you guys.
Great, Stephanie?
Thank you, Stephanie Etsman, she/her pronouns, I'm attending virtually today. I have long curly brown hair and I'm wearing a gray hoodie. And behind me is apparently my son who might be joining the meeting too, as an observer. He keeps loitering behind me, oh, yep.
Welcome, Anne Whitney.
Whitney Bennett, I use she/her, any member, I am wearing a brown shirt today, I'm attending virtually, and I have sandy blonde hair.
Awesome. We'll move on to the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north of the Columbia River, is the original homeland of the Confederate tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederate tribes cede of this land in the Treaty of eighteen fifty five while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wanalama, Warm Springs, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Clamath Trail ran north through this region, the great Salilo Falls Trading Grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land, it is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land. Okay, item number three, minutes approval. Approval of the May twenty third, twenty twenty four draft minutes, are there any corrections that need to be made to the minutes? Okay, no corrections. Is there a motion to approve the May twenty third, twenty twenty four draft minutes?
I'm, uh, a second.
Wait, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Unanimously approved. Nick is skipping. Moving on to number, item number four, public comment. Are there any members of the public online or in person that would like to comment during this time?
We have Emily Hammond.
I'm sorry, Nick, you're in your
Can you unmute yourself? Would you like to say?
Okay, so she doesn't have a statement.
Okay, thank you. And then there are Okay, Jenna? Can you unmute yourself?
Hello, I don't have a comment.
Okay. Him? Can you unmute yourself?
Hi there, I'm Kim Curly, I'm from Commute Options, and I don't see a way for me to have a video, but I just wanted to say hi and I'm just listening in today.
Awesome, thank you, Kim. Nick, if you need to get in touch with us, you can always email us here on site, or you can text me. Okay, moving on to item number five, Transportation Mobility Department Pedestrian Program Update from David Abus.
Well, good afternoon, everybody, David Abus, he/him, Director of our City of Bend Streets Transportation Mobility Department. And here today to share some updates on our pedestrian program efforts with the help of the Accessibility Construction Fund. And let me get my screen shared here. Andres, if I pick this entire screen, then I can switch around as you know. All right. So we did the introductions, I'll try to get through this fifteen, twenty minutes, have some time for some questions, as I mentioned, the pedestrian program efforts. And then talk about some core services, so the Transportation Mobility Department, we're mostly focused on the operations and maintenance of the transportation system. Our Engineering Infrastructure and Planning Department, otherwise known as E I P D. They really focus on the capital improvement side, so when a capital improvement project occurs, then it becomes ours to basically own and maintain for the rest of its life. But we work closely together, work with the growth management and, you know, planning department, transportation system plan development and things of that nature. And so with our core duties, what we're really striving to do is kind of a complete street approach, I call it. We look for enhancement or safety opportunities, really look at it through a lens of more than just a pavement condition. When we're boots on the ground with a maintenance or a street preservation project. Look at it holistically, is there other needs, sidewalk infill, safety enhancements? Landscape, tree trimming, things of that nature while we're there. Looking to make connections where sidewalks do not exist today, pedestrian accessibility and infill there, if there's barrier removals. And just kind of have that complete street approach with our operations and maintenance efforts. So our resources currently within our O and M budget, specific to sidewalk R and M, repair and maintenance. We got about thirty five thousand a year, that's really just materials, that's not staff, labor. And then in our infrastructure capital budget, we've got about two hundred thousand a year, and that is really for the ADA ramps associated with our street preservation work. So with our paving contracts, we need to have to bring up ADA ramps into compliance to current standards if they are not. And so that's what that capital budget is intended for. And then this biennium, we started with the Accessibility Construction Fund, accounting for a couple hundred thousand dollars a year that would be a reimbursable transfer to our department for, you know, opportunities that streets and operations makes improvements. You know, do some of that sidewalk infill while we're, while we're out there. The Accessibility Construction Fund also has five hundred thousand dollars, or half million dollars a year for kind of C I P projects. That's more in, you know, Cassandra and working with E I P D and identifying those types of projects, but that two hundred thousand a year is really for our self performed type of work. And I'll go through some examples of what we've been able to do. Future resources in the next biennial budget will have some of the transportation utility fee as it phases in. And that'll provide additional resources for a more robust pedestrian program per T S P. So on the planning side, you know, where that two hundred thousand dollars could go, or the capital work related to the Accessibility Construction Fund. On the left side there, hard to see, but that's our map of where our street preservation, operation and maintenance projects are this year. And a couple of examples where we've been able to utilize the Accessibility Construction Fund money for some sidewalk infill. Milwaukee, Bear Creek, along the cemetery, I've got some pictures, I'll share here in a little bit. So again, we're going to be out there, boots on the ground, either with ourselves or with our contractor for the street preservation. Is there other improvements we could do there, such as sidewalk infill, complete some connections and corridors? And then we're working on the pedestrian implementation plan, that's kind of that bigger capital improvement identifications, but it helps with priorities within the community and where those are needed. And then I put up here Bend Works, when we get citizen service requests, maybe there's a request for safety or safety concerns at a particular location. Those would kind of go into our Transportation Engineering Operations Group, which is Janet Ruby and her team. And, and if there's some enhancements we could do at a pedestrian crossing location, those would come, come to us through that, if not self identified by staff. And then for any of this, we work with Cassandra, if we've got some ideas of, you know, we think we could do a good thing here along with our other work, we'll run it by Cassandra, do you think this is a applicable use of the Accessibility Construction Fund transfer? And so it's been a good collaboration to do some good things out there. Here's a table, really a list, I've got some pictures, but just examples of some projects that we've been able to do. Third and Railroad, Ninth and Ogden, Third and Davis, Twelfth Portland, Fifteenth Sun Tree. We helped with a bus loading pad over there off of Chandler by the Bend Science Center. I mentioned Bear Creek and Milwaukee, and then Second and Franklin, we did some crosswalk ADA ramp. With next to the navigation center there, it was getting a lot of pedestrian activity, and so we wanted to do some safety elements there, street lighting things. The two hundred thousand dollars a year I mentioned is both years of the biennium, and so here we are wrapping up year one, we work on a two year biennial budget. And we're at the end of our first year, fiscal year of that biennial budget. And happy to say we've been able to install over twenty one hundred feet of sidewalk at about a hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. And so I feel good that we've been able to put that into good use this year, and then we've got things already queued up and identified going into this next fiscal year to utilize that budget. This is just an example of those projects I just mentioned, but it has been a consistent effort throughout the year. Along with our other work out there, so making improvements all over town at various times of year when we can fit that in with capacity and resources. The future improvements consideration I mentioned, College Way in Portland, doing an enhanced crossing with a median on that south leg, and that's that picture I threw on there, just as a conceptual example. Accessible pedestrian signals, we've got a remaining eleven signals that could use, use that update to A P S signals there, about eighty seven thousand dollars worth. Some work on button brush, a median improvement there, and then tying in Derek Cork to a pilot beat trail up there. So some examples, this is Third Street and the railroad, where Third Street goes, it's an underpass underneath the B N S F railroad. And you see Third Street with the cars there in the background on the left, this was pre-construction. And then the railroad street there adjacent to it tying in where that stop sign is at, there was no sidewalk at all. And so on the right, you see where we've been able to run sidewalk down that railroad street, about two hundred ninety feet worth. Put some crossings in there, added sidewalk to the east side of Third Street there. This is another view from up higher, again, the left. Pre-construction, no sidewalk, and then on the right, now we've got curb and sidewalk down through there. This is a Fifteenth Street and Sun Tree, made some improvements there with a, with a bus stop, added in there a C E T. Here's Bear Creek, so this is over near our facility. This would be along the cemetery property. And we have a street preservation project on Bear Creek this year. And so with Bear Creek being a collector type road, we put in an eight foot sidewalk through there where we could. There was a couple pinch points in there where it's a little bit narrower sidewalk, still, still, you know, six feet or so, but on the left, as you can see, there was, there was no path through there, this is right in the area of the Larkspur Trail as well. So we thought this would be a good effort, Cassandra supported it, and so now we've got connectivity through that area. Here's one of the pinch points I talked about, existing house on the left, limited right away, as you see there where their fences at, but we were able to still, still get a sidewalk through there up to that next corner with a accessible ramp. And then Milwaukee, Milwaukee is one of our neighborhood greenways, that's a local residential road that our street preservation program is, is doing a grind in it and paving that this year. And so there, this is at Fifteenth Street, as you see there on the left, you can see the sidewalk in the background. But then it, it stopped, it was sidewalk to nowhere, so we improved that sidewalk and connected it down to the corner with the ADA ramps there, as you see with the fire hydrant. This was the Bend Science Center bus stop expansion, that was a request, and we were able to self perform and do, although it's on Chandler. And then I want to talk a little bit about our bicycle and pedestrian maintenance efforts, so the T S P does have a program identified to improve snow and year round debris cleaning along key key routes, head and bike facilities. Tough to see here, I think, but on the left, example of winter time, so we've picked up two additional tool cats is the, the name of the vehicle, but it's a Bobcat brand, it's called a tool cat, and it's a little utility vehicle that you can get a variety of attachments for it. And so the, you see it there in the background, and you see a couple of our staff members with a shovel working on a roundabout and the sidewalks and the ADA, ADA efforts there. Those tool cats come with snow blowers, kick brooms, I think I got a picture, one, you know, a blade, a plow. And then on the right side, the right picture there, happy to share that we received our two mini sweepers this last week. Now, I have a video, which is actually from today that I'll share with you. But you'll see, you'll see it, it's kind of a matrix looking thing with three different brooms out front, and I'll share a video with you, but the idea is these sweepers, we're starting to get, and we will have more protected type facilities coming into our transportation system, so the video I'll show is an example of Wilson Corridor, where, where there's the, the material is called Duracurb, that separates the bike path from the travel lane, and so these smaller sweepers will fit in that, they will also fit on a sidewalk or a shared use path or a multi use path or through the pedestrian refuges on, on like the roundabouts. You know, we have the protected roundabout at Wilson and Ninth, which has a separated bike pass, and then obviously you got the pedestrian accessible routes as well, so this, these units can fit in there. The new intersection at Third and Wilson, signalized intersection, not a roundabout, but same idea, there's protected facilities there. So this can get in those protected bike lanes, it can get up on the sidewalks and ADA ramps and things. Here's an example of that tool cat with what I call a kick broom, and so it's going down that pathway and getting the snow off of, off of that path there. Here's a picture of that mini sweeper in the protected bike lane at a crosswalk at that Ninth and Wilson roundabout that I mentioned. And then I am going to see if I can switch. So this is a video, and I'm going to start it and pause it, it's not very long. So here, I'm gonna get up here just a little bit more, and I'm gonna pause it right there. So if you can see, a little hard to see with the shadow, but right in front of the cab is two brooms. And they adjust in width, so if you need to go very narrow, you can squeeze those brooms in and be narrow, if you're on a wider shared use path, they widen out. But I want to point out that matrix looking third arm broom that's way out front there. As this mini sweeper is coming down a, a street or on a path or in a protected, you know, roundabout or intersection like we were talking about on Wilson, and you get up to a pedestrian ADA ramp or crosswalk, that third arm can reach into that ADA ramp. And, you know, when we're coming out of winter time and all our sanding rock application, and we're picking, picking up the material. Our, our big full size sweepers will continue, you know, sweeping the main roads, but in the protected type facilities or on the key bike and pad routes like I talked about. This machine can come down along that curb line and clean that up, can get up on the sidewalk and clean it up if needed, and then when we get up to those crossings and ADA ramps, that, that third arm can reach out there and kick that material out, it's a vacuum type system, so it picks it up, it's not just spread the material around, so we're excited about it. I'll stop here and see if there's any questions.
Yes, thank you, David, that's great, that's, I can tell you're very excited about the new tool. Now, in the video I saw there was a bunch of gravel out in front of that, and that's, I'm a bike rider and I've experienced that gravel a lot of it, is that going to pick up the gravel too?
Yes.
Nice. Hey, that is, that is great. And, and, and it was funny, because I was just wondering at Ninth and Third, like, how are they gonna keep all this clean, but it looks like you've got the tool. I do have a second question. You mentioned that you were putting in, you have a few more, eleven more accessible crosswalk signals, and I just wanted to ask what you mean by accessible, is that audio too? And is it just, is it beeping or the, the voice with directional as well?
It's the push buttons, the A P S type push buttons with the, I think they're audible. I'd have to check with Janet Ruby on the specifics, you know, in our, our team, but, but basically getting the audible type crossings. Don't think they've been selected yet, and we're working with Cassandra for the use of that funds for it, but we want to make them as accessible as we can with the use of the accessibility funds.
Oh, right, great, we did hear, we did get that feedback from some of our field trips that, especially with the roundabouts. People lose their, their orientation as they're going around, and that a directional would be extremely helpful.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
I put my hand down, but didn't unmute myself. This is Whitney Bennett, I actually have the same questions as Liz, but I just wanted to emphasize as well, the same thing with the signaling. Audible is fantastic, the, the, the feedback that we, we also heard on our field trip is that the traffic may not stop threat doesn't help pedestrians, especially anyone visually impaired, or with any other type of disability that they might be trying to navigate with, so something we'd be definitely interested in hearing is when moving forward with those audible signals, if there's a way. I know that they can be, we heard they could be set, and so it's kind of a choice, so we if it could kind of lead to more direction as to the street that they're on, and if it's blinking, I think that's really helpful, so that's that's just something I wanted to note, and then I had a question too, on the, the tool cat and mini sweeper, those look so great. I am also a, like, person who rides a bike, and I am have fallen on that gravel multiple times, especially in the fall, so I guess my question was, are those brand new, or did you have them in the fall? I mean, sorry, did you have them in the spring?
They're brand new, the mini sweepers just showed up this last week, but there was quite a lead time for them, but we got two. And so, yeah, those just arrived, and the tool cats arrived like last month.
Right, great, yeah, because my biggest, definitely my concern is just like, what, as an able body falling on the gravel was not a good thing, but navigating those sidewalks when it's moving, the gravel moves from the bike lane to the sidewalk, and then the sidewalk back to the bike lane is just not great for our accessible or our disabled community, so that's good to hear.
Thank you, and all these, these should help, like I said, we're excited about them, I mean, the reality of it is, we're, we're up to like nine hundred and thirty six lane miles of streets in town. These aren't going to cover every street, but we will focus them obviously on the protected facilities, because our other larger equipment doesn't fit in there. And then we'll focus on kind of the twelve key routes in our transportation system plan, and continue to evolve from there as we continue to grow. And then, you know, add additional e, equipment and resources as, as we go forward.
This is John Halen, I was reading about how a city recently put in a universal speed limit of about twenty miles an hour within city limits, just because the odds of surviving an impact from a vehicle at that speed are much higher than twenty five miles an hour and up, has the city of Bend ever considered having a universal city speed limit?
We've been having recent robust conversations with council and community, community building subcommittee on speeds and that, and that topic right now. Just, just in this past, past month, and they're continuing in this next, you know, month or two, so it's being talked about for sure. You know, if it's, if we're reducing all speeds, it gets into statutory requirements, and then, and then streets and roads that need a speed study. And so if we're doing something different than the statutory requirements, say, like on local residential road, for example, of twenty five, and if we're going to make it twenty, we have to go post it as, as twenty, which, you know, a lot of, a lot of signs with, with as many lane miles as we have, so we are having those discussions and considerations right now, John.
Okay, great.
Derek?
Yeah, hey, David, this is Derek Hoffbauer, C E T. Hey, just real quick, we've had a lot of conversations about snow removal here, and, you know, working more now to prepare for winter, and I know we've had some coordination meetings with you guys in terms of like what, what takes priority, and, and I was just wondering if you could maybe quickly explain like how it, how that system works where you're plowing priority roads that have been designated by C E T that are like those high frequency routes, just to give the, the committee kind of a perspective on, on the plan that we have in place.
Certainly, hi Derek, and yeah, I think this new equipment, it'll be fun and interesting to put those to use this coming winter, now that we have them. But yeah, our, our winter operations plan, we have priority ones, twos, and threes, and so when a crew comes in, we, we operate two schedules in the winter time to, to try to catch that morning commute, so we have staff starting at four A M. And they work till noon on their standard five to five day, eight hour shift. And then we have another crew come on, second crew comes on at eleven, and they work until seven, so to try to capture that morning and evening commute and, and all day long, really. Then we have the ability to run overtime, and if we get into a, a snow mageddon situation, I'll call it, we have the ability to go to two twelve hour shifts for round the clock coverage. Priority ones are your main, main arterials, you know, think of a Third Street or Twenty Seventh Street or, or Wilson, those, those main roads to move, move people, commerce. Our priority twos kind of get into the collector type roads that are connecting neighborhoods to the arterials. They also account for business centers, schools, hospitals, medical centers, that type of thing. Our staff, city staff really focuses on the ones and twos. Every storm's different, there's those nuances, but if it snows for a day or two, you know, you, you might come in in your shift and you, and you're dealing with six inches of snow on your priority one, but if it's snowing all day, you get to the end of your section, end of your area. There might be four inches where you started and you need to come back and hit that road again. But as the storm resides, we, we expand out into the priority twos, priority threes, priority threes of the local residential. Which is the bulk of our system. And we have the ability for on-call contractors when, you know, if it gets heavy enough storm and we consider a lot of factors, how much snowfall, what's the forecast, those types of things. Specific then with those priority one, two, threes, part of those ones and twos consider CET's bus routes. And, and where bus stops are at. And so, you know, Derek, we're excited with this equipment and priorities. Then with a smaller group, we have, we used to use temporary employees through summer construction season. Now we've got some, some folks in the winter time as well, you know, a couple of teams of two. And so I'm not pulling a CDL driver out of a big plow that we're needing to have out on the street. But a small group that splits up into a couple of teams and they start focusing on the roundabouts and the bridges and, you know, our, our key routes. And so sending those tool cats down these key routes and helping with snow plowing, snow removal. As we continue to urbanize and densify our winter operations in, in areas is going to transition to more of a snow removal effort than a snow plowing effort. But you know, that's as we grow. So you know that those little tool cats, Derek, if we prioritize those routes and, and we're helping with snow removal on sidewalks, for example, that tie into the bus stops and your guys' routes, that's where we want to collaborate and coordinate that with you.
Yeah, thanks, David. And maybe it behooves of us to get a meeting scheduled this fall to start to talk about the new technology you guys have and how we could maybe work that into our existing planning efforts. Thank you.
Certainly. We, we've done that multiple years now, getting together in the fall and now, now we just have some new tools to talk about how they benefit us as well.
Liz?
Yes. Yeah. When you were talking about the priority system, ones, twos and threes. And it sounded to me like that plowing road, are the sidewalks the same priority system or do they have a different, different set of ones, twos and threes?
So in our code sidewalks are the adjacent property owners responsibility, you know, whether that's residential or commercial. Our staff would go out and I, I call them no man's lands for lack of a better term, but you know, roundabouts or a bridge crossing where there's really not a distinct adjacent property owner.
Right.
Staff goes and helps. And in the past, if I go back a few years, we weren't getting to those until our priority ones and twos and the street plowing was at a point to where staff could get out of the snowplow and go, you know, deal with the roundabouts and bridges with the snow shovels and that type of thing. Now we have a dedicated, small group, about four, four staff members, they split up into teams of two. But on the very first day of a, of a snowstorm, we now have staff hitting those roundabouts and bridges and key routes at, at the same time. So, so there is, I guess you could say these areas of roundabouts and bridges and the key routes from a pedestrian or bike lane standpoint, we now have a crew that that is their number one priority. While our CDL drivers are in the snowplows.
Right. And is that the same with the trails then? Cause I've seen trails cloud.
Ben Parks and Rec and we, and we have a maintenance program with Ben Parks and Rec of, of what they maintain, what we maintain because, you know, separate agencies, separate districts. So, you know, trails are, are maintained by Ben Parks and Rec for the most part, but their trails tie into our city system or cross city streets at locations. So I would say trails is a combined effort, Liz.
Okay.
Separated trails from the road, take the hall trail, for example, out there on Century. But that's all Ben Parks and Rec doing that, plowing and maintenance of those.
Okay.
This is John. I have a quick question, like for like Mount Washington Drive, right where Broken Top is, is Broken Top in charge of that sidewalk or is that taken care of by the city of Bend?
That would be Broken Top is the adjacent property owner.
Okay, got it.
And with, with this new equipment and, and some staff dedicated to that, in, in the transportation system plan, which is available on our, you know, on our website. That's where we'll initially start our focus on helping, you know, along with the roundabouts and the bridges and then those no man's lands, but really trying to help with those key routes. And we'll, we'll evolve from there as, as the community grows.
When you were talking about snowplowing, it reminded me of how they paint the Golden Gate Bridge and they start at one end and after seven years, they have to go back and start painting it again. It's just like, oh my God. Awesome. Are there any more questions? Oh, Whitney.
Yeah, this is Whitney. I just have one more question because we switched into snowplow and then we were talking about sidewalks. And I guess just to clarify, the, the gravel that builds up on sidewalks because the snow getting thrown off there, is that the, the resident's responsibility as well to clean off that gravel or does the city sweep that when they're sweeping the streets? How does that, how does that work?
Use the adjacent property owner's responsibility per our code to
For the gravel. Okay.
We do go out, part of the spring cleanup effort, when Mother Nature kind of transitions out of winter into spring. We do go out and help with the, again, with those no man's lands or some of the major corridors. And in the past, maybe you've seen our, our staff with backpack blowers making a big old dust storm, blowing the material off of sidewalks. So that the big street sweeper can come behind them and pick that up. And with these newer mini sweepers, we, we can pick that material up right off the sidewalk. Again, on the key route focused, it's not a, it's not a, a city, citywide. You know, everything, but so yes, the adjacent property owner is responsible for keeping their sidewalk in a, in a good, well-maintained condition, whether that's snow, gravel, leaves, you need it. That material.
Great. Are there any other questions? If not, I think that's it for that section.
Thank you, everybody for having me and thank you for coming. That was great. I love those two things. Or I can't wait to tell all my biking friends about them.
They've all been talking about building their own sweepers to do the lanes and I'm like, right. All right. Thank you. Great.
Thank you, David.
Moving on to section number six, COBAC Strategic Plan Subgroup Updates. I know for a fact that my group has not met, so we don't really have much to update on our end for the creating an accessible community group. Is the subgroup Improving Transportation and Infrastructure Group able to make any comment?
Yeah, this is Derek. We have not met since we had our last walk and roll event. But our next focus is on the kind of the ADA or the accessible transportation to and from the Redmond Airport. So we have not meant to discuss that. It's been a pretty busy summer. But that's, we'll get a meeting set up soon. Once our chair is back.
Great. And what about creating a culture of accessibility within the City of Bend group or subgroup?
This is Stephanie. We have not met since our last, our meeting last month. We don't really have any updates. We still are kind of hoping that we can talk the City of Bend HR department into at a minimum, starting all new employee hires with the trauma-informed trainings that are offered by TIO. And those are free and they're self-paced. So we need to figure out who within the city of Bend to reach out to, to kind of you know, ask what the likelihood is that they could incorporate this as the onboarding process for new hires. So.
Thank you. Stephanie, I have Stephanie, this is Andres, he/him pronouns, Equity and Inclusion Director. I'll have Cassandra and team reach out so that we can get you connected with HR.
Thank you.
Contacts for that.
Perfect. And that's it for updates.
Great. Awesome. Well, for the subgroups, I know I'm going to try and make a point to meet with my subgroup before the next July meeting. Worst case scenario, I know we're taking August off, so that'll give us plenty of time to grab a drink at Bevel and talk business in our different subgroups. So I encourage you guys in the next, at least before the next September meeting, to try and meet up with your subgroups and hopefully in September, we'll have some, some good updates. Especially my group. I have been a little busy lately, but I'll be back on it. Okay. Item number seven, pullback roundtable. Please share any meetings that you attended, information that pertains to accessibility that you discovered this past month and/or firsthand experiences that you have pertaining to accessibility that you would like to share with the group. Liz, would you like to start? Liz, in person, Liz?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Aaron, so you have your hand up?
Aaron? Yes, I wasn't sure you called him. I'm not sure this is COBAC related, but I just wanted to mention that we are having some major issues in our neighborhood of speeding going down our street. I live in southwest Bend and my street's kind of a connector. And so I emailed Barb Campbell asking for some advice and she sent forward my email to the chief of patrol and they had two speed trap stings within the following week, which was a good short-term help. I guess Barb's not here today, but it was a really big help and I really appreciate her. So I know it's not COBAC related per se, but I felt like it was a big help and it's good to have some resources to at least there's some, some help for some of those pretty challenging neighborhoods.
Aaron, can you give me the name of the, this is John, can you give me the name of this that you're having the problems on? Is it Brookswood?
Poplar. So Poplar goes between Brookswood and Lockpole. And so basically every morning walking my kids to school, one kid to school, waiting for the bus, they get up screaming at cars every morning, me and our neighbors are both, all of us are basically yelling at cars to slow down. Our street's really straight. And so it's straight. So for the rest of the neighborhood, it's pretty bumpy and kind of not necessarily connector road. So yeah, when the police showed up in this speed trap, they, they said four cars pulled over at all times, which is great. I don't, I think it would be nice to have some infrastructure done eventually, but it was great to see a pretty immediate response. And I wish it was a sooner in school year, but it was gratifying to see something being done relatively quickly. So it was good in that regard. And I hope at some point there could be some maybe infrastructure changes made that would, you know, just reduce speeding in general.
Thank you. That reminds me, I was at a city council meeting recently and there was a gentleman there with his newborn talking about how narrow she, narrow streets are safer streets. So maybe that's something that we can advocate to the city about making streets a little bit more narrow so we can slow these cars down. Cause you know, I have a business on Greenwood and it's terrifying.
Yeah, yeah. My dentist liked Greenwood. It's pretty, pretty nerve wracking, but this is a basically just gets used as a drag shirt between at all hours, especially walking to school and yeah, it was great that Barb did that. And then coincidentally, that was a Tuesday and a Thursday where the speed traps happened. Then on Friday, I was waiting out for the bus with my daughter and the bus stopped and the stop sign was out. And somebody who lived behind me blew right through it and almost hit me and my daughter. I called the Bend, Bend LePine School District to see that video. And they had videos. I called, I reported to the police, but the Bend LePine Transportation District said that happens 10 to 12 times a day, which I thought was pretty shocking and really disturbing. So I feel like there's a long way to go for improving of street safety, which may be COBAC related, but you know, probably benefits everybody in the community.
Well, good on you. About it. Cause a lot of people would just complain.
Neighbor, I guess. That's all I have.
Okay, Derek, do you have any updates?
Yeah. So our Redmond Flex Routes launched earlier this month. These are two routes, one in northwest Redmond and the other in southeast Redmond. So one of the routes does access the airport between 7:30 AM and 5:30 PM, Monday through Friday. And that is an accessible low floor vehicle that we're using for that. So that's for people within Redmond that need to get to the airport. And we're still working on those accessible solutions between Bend and the Redmond Airport. But we're also doing an event with this Redmond Senior Center. It's going to be next Thursday. Where we're taking a group of seniors on a bus trip and doing some trivia with them. Just demonstrating that our vehicles are, are accessible for people of all ages. And then on the recreation side, all of our recreation services did start a couple of weeks ago. We've got the new transit to Trails service that has a new 20 bike trailer that people are really loving. And then we also have the Ride the River and the Lava Butte Service. So we're just plugging away at, at promoting those and getting some radio ads out and increasing awareness of those services. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Derek, one question I have for you is I had heard that the, that the bus at Lava Butte doesn't have ADA capability. Is that correct?
No, it should. All of our buses have ADA capability. So I definitely would have a lift on the back because we need a bigger bus for that. And all of our, all of our vehicles have ADA accessibility, even our vans. So I don't, I don't know. Maybe if you could circle back to see where that came from. And send that to me and I can follow up.
Okay. Corey Sparks?
Hi, this is Corey. I don't have any updates this month.
Liz Dether Martin?
Yeah, yeah. So, and I'm, I'm wondering, John, if you attended this also, the Greenwood pedestrian safety corridor open house, was that just last week? Did you attend that, John?
I was there for the first half hour or so.
Okay.
And an open house and felt really depressed and sad.
Okay. Well, well, I went and I, I let them know that I was, you know, from COBAC and I said, you know, like who's, who's the best person to talk to here about accessibility? And they're all looking at each other like, I don't know. And but I eventually found someone to talk to, a couple of people to talk to. And they really hadn't put any thoughts or requirements for accessibility in their plans. They said, oh, there might be a couple of parking spots that we could make accessible, but they would be parallel parking spots. And so what are you going to do? Like load out of your wheelchair in the middle of the single lane of traffic? No, no, no. That's terrifying, right? So I did, you know, put in my comments and gosh, I, I, I will I will look and see if, if, if they're still, they must still be taking comments with us and anybody can, you know, look that up, but yeah, it was kind of shocking, but at least for the people who were there, there was very little attention paid to that, but whatever. They're, they're, they don't seem to be getting word. Did anybody else attend?
I was there and actually I heard, I got an email from Garrett from the city who said that they're pushing back the implementation because of pushback about bike lanes. Possibly like maybe even next year, depending on.
No. Is that going to delay everything then?
As, as, as regards to the Greenwood quick build, I think just that, but.
Well, no, because everything hinges, there's Greenwood and then they're going to do Franklin and then they're going to do Hawthorne. So now if they have to push everything back, and this is pushback against bike lanes?
This is pushback because people from the community want to protect the bike lanes from the parked cars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cause they had tried to put parked cars, then a bike lane and then the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, so car, car travel, bike lane, parking sidewalk. And there was a reason that wasn't going to work. Gosh, now I forget what it was.
I mean, I, and there was a, a gentleman who, like I said, he brought his newborn into the city council meeting last week where in two minutes, he just kind of succinctly put into perfect words like what you know, about narrow streets are safe streets and about how how important was for him to be able to bike around with his kids and
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
In the current build. And I think quite a few people in the cycling community and the community pushed back and that's why there's the delay. But I think that in regards to Greenwood. in regards to Greenwood, if I'm correct, it's
Right.
Franklin or the Hawthorne over crossing.
Right, but they they wanted to do the Greenwood Quick Build, so then they had better crossing when they worked on Franklin. When they, you know, because that would be shut down and really hard to get past. So this could delay everything, including, you know, uh, with the one, two, three thing. Um, you know, and I agree, I mean, you know, I think I said it wrong, but, um, anyway, having having a bike lane just to the left of cars between parked cars and moving cars. I mean, that door prize thing is real and terrifying, right? I mean, if you're just, if you're just following, this is, this is a bike issue, I suppose, but, um, it, yeah, um, yeah, it's 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 you're you're in between a rock and a hard place, right? And then the rocks sometimes jet out at you when you're not expecting it. So anyway, I can understand the concern. So. All right. But yeah, um, I will, I will look up really fast the, um, um, the link, uh, for that, for the Greenwood Crossing and and if anybody wanted to, uh, weigh in. Um, oh, oh, also there's, so so what they're thinking about doing at, um, Greenwood and second is the semi-protected pedestrian crossing thing, which is what they have up at Third and Wilson now. And I guess that's semi-protected for bikes too. So there's like the little little oases, little islands, um, uh, separating bikes from cars and pedestrians from cars. So that that I suppose is a good thing. So, okay, all right, that's it. Thank you.
Letter that we could vote on as COBAC next meeting to send to the city of Bend regarding ADA, uh, considerations in the Greenwood Quick Build? Andres?
Um, thank you. Uh, this Andres Portella, um, he/him just wanted to give an update that they're going to work to address concerns and be coming back to council in July. So we'll get a pretty good update on on we're on the green improvement safety quarter.
Great. Um, next up, Nicholas Raiden?
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Awesome. Yeah, uh, this Nicholas Raiden here again, and, uh, uh, not really too many updates besides just continuing architectural design with accessibility in mind and um, I did, um, complete my residency with High Lakes Elementary um, a few weeks ago, uh, and that was an architects and schools residency to teach uh, elementary kids about architecture and uh, I did bring up some just overall just accessibility kind of things and sustainability items as part of that residency. And at the end, uh, the kids put together some uh, models of their homesteads that they built it when groups and that was at Tower Theater on that first Friday of June this month. And so that was a a very successful thing. And so I hope to continue that with the same group next year and continue teaching them about architecture process, accessibility, sustainability, and uh, how to kind of better our communities. So that's that's my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Stephanie? Any updates?
Hi, this is Stephanie. I don't really have any, um, um, updates, but I do want to say that I also live in southwest Bend, um, just kind of between Pine Ridge Elementary and Elk Meadow. And I wanted to say that they are doing a sidewalk sidewalk improvement project on Larkwood, which enters is it's if you're going down Murphy, the new Murphy-Brookswood Roundabout and you exit straight ahead, you're now on Lark's Larkwood. And so it's really nice to see sidewalks going in there finally because it's such a heavily, um, trafficked um, pedestrian route for families, um, who are walking their kids to and from school. So that's really cool. I didn't see it on the list of, um, sidewalk improvement projects that were presented earlier. Um, and then you know, I don't know if there are, I guess this would be a question of when they're having conversations, who who, what meetings could you go to to provide community testimony on safe streets, whether it's narrow streets or a reduction in speed limits? Because while the narrow streets are safe streets, I think narrow streets are only most effective when you also have a simultaneous reduction in speed limit. Because in my experience, we have a lot of narrow streets here in southwest Bend and the little communities that are here. And so there's parking allowed on one side of the street, no parking allowed on the other side. But it creates a lot of congestion. That's what I see happen with narrow streets is that you now have cars you know, pretty closely packed. And if you have, you know, cars speeding that are parked, you know, along one side of the street, and then you've got cars driving even at a twenty-five mile an hour residential speed limit, but to be honest, they're usually much higher than that. Um, then you, and then you've got pedestrians that are crossing mid-street because, um, it it just, I've seen so many near misses, near misses with cyclists or kids, even, you know, we have so many small children in the neighborhood riding their bikes and they're, you know, they're wobbly. Anyway, it just seems like you can't have one or the other. Uh, they really seem need to go hand in hand. So if you're gonna have narrow streets, you have to have a reduction in speed limit too. Um, anyway, so what, so I guess that was my question. What committee is? And you know, what, how do you, how do you get involved in in those conversations?
Um.
Um, great question, Stephanie. This Andres Portella, Equity and Inclusion Director. Um, I think probably the best base to go ahead and provide that feedback is at your council meeting. Um, so, um, you can write an email or we can do public comment during the council meeting additionally. Um, we talked about providing some recommendations as a group if we can, if we can come to um, a set of recommendations or an email that can potentially be advised to city management and management, city management can provide that to council. So those are some options.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's all I have.
Welcome. But the council all email, uh, get usually get some good responses. Um, next up, Whitney?
The, um, this is Whitney. I don't have any updates, but, um, one thing that just uh, came to mind when talking about the speeds and who to connect with. I definitely agree with city council, but Southwest Crossing is another Southwest Crossing resident. Um, there is a neighborhood association too that could use some stronger, strong voices on it to, um, because then a lot of that gets pulled and ends up can get directed to city council too. So that Southwest Neighborhood Association is a good one to connect to. That's all I have.
Thank you.
And this is John. Uh, I would say that, um, I joined my neighborhood association, um, which is now going to be called Neighborhood Districts. Um, I joined the board because I wanted to do more community building stuff because most people in my neighborhood don't even know that they exist. Um, and we did a free ice cream social, which was pretty awesome. Um, used some of the budget to buy some ice cream and give it out to kids and families, uh, at Pine Ridge Park. Um, and, uh, it was fun. We got to use the, uh, the party trailer and I think next year we might actually use a street instead because Pine Ridge Park is pretty tucked back in there and it'd be nice to use something a little bit, little bit more visible. Um, but yeah, um, if you have neighborhood concerns, uh, neighborhood districts are always a great way to go about it. Some are more active than others. Uh, for instance, I got an email from the Boyd Acres Neighborhood District and they're throwing a massive party with live music and all sorts of stuff, which has me so jealous. Um, because that would be awesome if most neighborhood districts did stuff like that, but I highly recommend you get involved in your local neighborhood district. There, they actually get a budget from the city of Bend to do community building and advocacy for the neighborhood. So it's a great way to get involved.
Your district is also pretty happening on there. Hey, I I changed my name to bendoregon.gov slash uh, Midtown Crossings. That's where you can look up information and and give some feedback. I think they're done taking feedback for now on Greenwood, but Hawthorne is next and it's coming up in July. So if you take a look at that website, then, um, you could get some information and and give them some input on accessible, uh, uh, accessibility built in to their, to their plans. Okay.
Awesome. Uh, this is John. Uh, item number eight, agenda setting. Is there anything that people want to put on the agenda for our next meeting in July? Okay, I'll take those and no. Uh, item number nine, go back council liaison update. Is Barb here? I don't believe so. All right. We're gonna get out of here early, I think. Our next COBAC meeting will be Thursday, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four from one PM to two thirty PM. I encourage, um, the subgroups to meet before that date, but like I said, uh, if it, if you have to wait until September, um, that's totally fine. I know we're all really busy this summer, especially with school being out. Um, if there's no other, uh, COBAC business, uh, with no further business, the city of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to adjourn?
My motion to adjourn, this is Nicholas Raiden.
Oh, second.
We have a second? And all in favor? I
Bye.
Thanks.
Motion is unanimous. The meeting is adjourned at two oh three PM. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you very much. Have a good day, guys.
You too.